Good evening, welcome to the August 11th, 2021, meeting of the Holliston zoning board of appeals. Prior to starting the meeting, I want to read into the record. Notice about doing this remotely. Pursuant to the governor's June 16th, 2021 act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL chapter 38, paragraph 20. The zoning board of appeals will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's website within 24 hours in accordance with keeping public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, a roll call attendance will be taken. John Love, present. JPBD?
Present.
Mark Bush? Is absent. And Elizabeth Embertzer?
Present.
Thanks very much, all. We're here and ready to go. So, thank you those in attendance. And let's see if we can get things going. The first order of business is the approval of minutes for the June 30th meeting and for the July 8th meeting. So are there for the June 30th meeting? Were there any edits or questions that anybody had? I was good with them. And Jay, you weren't there, so.
Yeah, I wasn't there, so.
Liz, if you'll make a motion to accept them, then.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 30th, 2021, as written.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor will use a roll call vote. John, I, Jay?
I think I have to abstain.
Okay, Liz, I. I'm speaking for you.
But what you said, no, I.
I thank you very much, and my apologies. Motion carries, the minutes are approved. The second are the minutes for the July 8th meeting. Any comments, edits, or questions on those?
No, I thought they were fine.
Likewise. Because if you'd make the motion again.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 8th, 2021, as written.
I will second it. Any discussion? All those in favor, John, I, Jay?
Abstain.
Liz?
I.
There you did all by yourself. No prompting. Thank you. The motion carries, the minutes are approved as written. The second administrative order of business was the approval of the house plans for Wendell Phillips at 115 Fairview Street, going back to, I believe, our June 30th meeting where we approved the request with a condition that the plans be submitted for approval by the board prior to looking so. Are there any questions on that? I guess that's Liz, you or I?
What's the total square footage?
Yes, the total square footage on that is 4,077. So if you see each floor, it lists the first floor square footage and then the second floor square footage on the second floor.
On the bottom there, yep.
Yep, it is a little confusing how it's organized.
And I didn't find it, but I didn't look as hard as I could have. Do you happen to know the height from grade to the top of the roof line?
It is listed on the elevation. I want to say, I have to kind of add it up. It's on that last page. I have it in front of me. It's, I believe it was about 33 or something. You have to add a few dimensions on that, but I believe it's about 33 feet.
Okay. Need better eyes.
I got a copy.
Here we go.
Feet plus, yeah, I see where the grade is. And then the back grade, it's a little more. Okay. Yeah, I, okay. Now, it was the, thank you for the complete set of plans. That was an easy way to take a look at it.
And, yeah, because you gotta, you gotta add up a few dimensions as I'm looking at the plan in front of me. I can give you that number, just give me one second here.
Okay, I I got to about 30 feet to the first floor and then in the foot, a couple steps down.
So, yeah, if you see, so the top plate to the top of the subfloor is one foot. And then his next marking, the architect, has 31 feet listed from the top of the subfloor all the way to the top of that ridge, 31, four, plus the one foot. So that brings us to 32, 32 feet, four inches from the top plate to the top of the ridge.
And then it looks like about in the front, two steps down to grade. And so called.
Yeah, the front, we're gonna have to, we're gonna be bringing up the grade to match, so it should be pretty much only a few steps to the grade, yes.
Okay, thank you. Clear to me. Any further questions, Liz? And?
I don't.
If you could make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the house plans for 115 Fairview Street, as submitted.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, John, I, Jay?
Abstain.
Liz?
I.
Motion carries, your plans are approved, so I think you're in accordance with your permit in that.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's hard work on this, and I appreciate the opportunity to build in Holliston. I'm gonna put up a house that's an asset to the town. I appreciate this opportunity.
No, we appreciate it, and thank you for your timely submission, so we still remember what we were getting it submitted for. Makes it much simpler.
Okay. I tell.
Alrighty, terrific, thank you. Next, we are at 7:10, so that's appropriate for us to go to our next order of business, which pardon me, I won't get too. That's the public hearing for a request for a dimensional variance at 64 Mark Tree Road. And can I ask who's presenting that? Oh, hello, you're muted, so you have to unmute.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Quite all right. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, sure. My name is Zing and you, so I leave at 64 Mark Tree Road, Holliston, Mass. 01746.
Fantastic. And, Liz, could you summarize for us what you would like to do here and her asking for us, we've seen your applications, I'll give a sense, but let us know in your words what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, so I hope I can add a garage on the right side of the house, so, oh, yes, so that's my application. And my mom is living with me, and she is 70, almost 72 years old. So without garage, I think when we have a snowstorm, it's dangerous for my mom to walk from the parking lot to the house. And also, I'm a pharmacist, so I work in a pharmacy. When we have a snowstorm, ER opens, police station opens, pharmacy opens. So I have to like, you know, go to work, open the pharmacy early in the morning, and without garage, we will be like, no, harder for me just to shovel all the snow and be there on time to open the pharmacy. And I think when the house was built, the requirements was only 10 feet. But right now it says 20 feet. So if the town can approve my plan, so according to the old plan, old requirements, I'm still like 10 feet away from the border. So I hope the town will approve my request.
Okay. And as I understand, that's really the only place that would work on the lot for for a garage, given the current location of the house and layout of the house.
Yes.
And septic system?
Yes.
Okay. Are there questions of the applicant from any of the board members?
I do have a question. So it looks like in the application, so there's the house, and then there's the driveway, and then there's the what looks like the spot at the end of the driveway that will be the garage. Is that a two-car garage or a one-car garage? I can't quite tell at the picture.
So I hope to like, build a tight two-car garage, because this yard is so big, and I bought the tractor for my yard, and I hope can, you know, put my tractor into another, like a small garage right beside my car.
So I'm looking, I'm trying to look at the plan. So is it 22 feet wi- wide, the new garage, is that right?
So that's my, you know, proposed plan for like a not huge two-car garage, will be like a small-sized two-car garage.
Single door or both or?
I have to think about the details. I mean, I'm fine with either way, maybe just one big door, maybe two small doors, both will be fine with me.
Okay, so we're looking at the dimensional element of this, so so we can assume that the box that you showed on the plan is, that's the most you're gonna build, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. And just so that you're clear and don't get further doubt, what we grant you for relief has to go to the furthest element of the house, with the exception now of what we gutters are and overhangs are not any longer included, but just to make sure that we're there, but it looks like you're looking for to go with the 10 feet of the sideline.
Yes.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who has questions of the applicant?
Yes, I have a question. Well, actually, I have a couple of concerns, I should say, that if he's building that 22 feet. Am I muted?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, if he's building that 22.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Joseph Arujio, 76 Mark Tree Road. I'm his neighbor. Right on the plan that they showed. Okay, and the couple of concerns that I have is that why you're building a huge garage there, which is 22 feet? You only really need a one-car garage, which a typical one-car is 12 feet. And he's going back 30 feet, so in that drawing, if you go back 30 feet, you have plenty of room for his tractor. And so the concerns I have is the diagram that he has presented, I believe, is a little bit incorrect, because I had the land surveyed, and it basically goes further. So if you're, if you're coming 10 feet into my property, well, not my property, his property, you're 10 feet closer, that number could be less. That's one of my concerns. So what I'm advising is that we do a land survey to find exactly where the line is and where the property is gonna end up. Because if you approve this, what will happen is that then he'll build it, and then, you know, it'll be way too close.
Okay, um, just, yeah, I'm looking at this, this looks like this plan is from a survey plan, but
It's a plot plan.
Yeah. By a surveyor, but just as a for the record, if we, if we were to grant this, typically, we would grant it with a condition, it could be no closer than whatever the requested, or maybe even not requested, it could be whatever we say amount is, so that if it ends up being closer than that, he won't be able to build it.
So.
That's why we're, we're asking these questions now about this, to make sure that there's no misunderstanding and, you know.
My second concern is that this is wetlands that we have here. His yard gets wet, my yard gets wet. Now, if you build that garage, which is 10 feet closer, that's less land to absorb water, so it's all gonna go on my yard. And that's why I believe these setbacks were put in place.
That's certainly one of the concerns with them. Question for the applicant, how would the, the roof of this drain and to where do you?
Oh, I haven't talked to, I mean, designer, engineer about details. So I talked to a couple of people, and they told me, and I can go like, go this way, so the water, we have the gutter, and it goes to the right side of the house. So I'm fine for either way, just depends on the designer, you know, which way they think is good for the land, for the neighbor, for the house. So I don't, I'm not picky for the shape, the roof, but just to want to make sure it's good for everyone in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Now, is, is there gonna be a land survey being done, so we know exactly?
I did a land survey. I already submit in the application, I think from the Applewood in Holliston. So I paid him to do the land survey, I think. If you see, like, I think maybe the seventh, sixth page in the PDF. So I had him to do the survey, so he showed me all his survey, and then he, I asked him, I want to like, build a garage on the right side, and that's where he just draw like a picture to show where the future grass will be.
I didn't, I didn't see any marks or anything, and I don't believe he did a proper survey on it.
Let me double check the survey I got from the Applewood from Holliston. One second.
Yeah, I'm looking at what was submitted here.
It's, it's a plot plan with, you know, footage measured by whatever.
Right, but it's certified by a registered land surveyor, so.
So, so I, I can basically, if it's wrong, then who ends up correcting it?
The applicant is, is.
I got this guy from Applewood Survey Company LLC in Holliston, the 21 Green Street, from Terrence Ryan. And also, he listed his license number, 37057. So I think this is a land survey, right?
It's a survey on a plot plan. I spoke to the gentleman, he said he did a topological thing, took it from years ago when they did the septic system. I'm saying that he needs, they need to come out and put the line there.
Oh, you mean the survey has to put a line here?
Well, if you put those measurements in by a plot plan, the plot plan is not an accurate document. He can put those things and say, oh, yeah, you're within these distances, and you can get, get something done that way. And I have the history of basically doing a survey. I know, I know where the line is. And it's, it's one of those things that I don't think you should be able to fit a 22-foot garage in there. Now, if you went to a typical one-car garage, which is about 12 feet, you put your setback in, and if you're off by a foot or two, I don't care, but this way, if you leave me with just 10, six feet on the side, I'm gonna end up with a lot of water on my property.
So we, as part of any decision we make, we can, we can ask that the, that the lot line gets pinned at the corners, or we can, we can ask for further survey determination, so.
That would be, that would be great.
Yeah, I was just looking at I didn't drive, I know where Mark Tree is, but I didn't drive it for this application. And it does look like most of the houses that do have garages seem to have two-car garages. So I don't think it's that uncommon in terms of the size and enassing, but, but I do agree, I don't want anything to, to you know, I don't want any relief granted with respect to your lot line, if your lot line isn't properly identified.
That's true. I like that. The, the other thing is the two-car garage, like, right next, I'm his neighbor, I have a two-car garage. However, I had to go with a 20-foot setback also, or else I could have put a three-car. Or went for variance. It's, it's one of those things that you, you don't want to, you know, hurt your neighbors or, you know, because I could shove all the water to the other side with, with another garage.
So my plan to build a two-car garage, because right now I'm divorced, so just to me, one car. So I'm planning for the future, so you know, if someday I meet some, you know, lady, so two-person, two cars. If I just build one-car garage, so I mean, for the future, I have to leave one car outside. So that's why I thought, you know, if I want to build a one-car garage, I don't have to go through variance, I can just submit application, you know, since it's 20 feet requirements accepted. But I'm thinking, you know, if I, since I want to build a garage, think about my future, maybe like in two years, three years, I have another lady, and then, you know, both people work, two cars. So just one car leave outside, another car in the garage. That's why I thought I maybe, since I will build a garage, and we go to the variance, have a two-car garage, so that's good for my, you know, just the future.
Well, I give you a suggestion, you can go with a two-car garage with probably less footage. You don't need 22 feet for.
Oh, 22. I talked to the Terrence, and he said 22 is not huge, it's like the typical, the width of the garage. So I even like to Google online, what's the standard, you know, size of the two-car garage? Someone says, you know, you can like, build 26 feet wide, and no, 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 that's too much. So I just put the standard size from the website to show, that's the proximity, you know, the distance between my borderline and with my neighbor.
I, I, I did Google too, and two-car garage came out 18 by 22.
18? Oh, maybe we see the different pages. Car. Standard size for two-car garage, 24 by 24.
Yeah, you can find, yeah, you can find any size you want.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, since this is my first time to deal with the garage.
Width is, is the standard parking width of a compact space. So 18 would be about the absolute minimum I could.
Right, it is, yeah.
Because you need walls and stuff like that too, but that, that would be like two cars in a parking lot for a smaller standard is 10 by 20.
And also, when the house was built, it's only 10 feet requirement. And then later on, and the 10 feet was increased to 20 feet. So you know, if I bought the house 30 years ago, I mean, it's still 10 feet. I did not have to go through the variance.
Right, that's, that's correct, but unfortunately, you didn't.
Yeah.
That's the truth here.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant? So is there anybody that wishes to be held, Mr. Arujio, do you have any? You, you, I think we've got a lot of your comment, but if you have any further comments to make regarding your opposition or support or suggestions beyond what you have, you're welcome to do so.
Okay. No, I just, I just think that was by Jay, mentioned that, you know, if you put the line there, you'll know exactly where you are. And you go and build, and then you know exactly what the variance is for, because I believe that variance may not be 10 feet less.
Yeah, well, and I think that's good advice in a situation like this, is if you were given that you, the variances to the lot line, regardless of where you think the lot line is, it's where it is. So if you were to build without ascertaining the right location, you could be in, have to tear it down and start over. So I think it's a real good idea on anything that's working on a variance or close to you using dimensions like that. So it's, it's very well-taken point, and there. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard, either in support or opposition to this application? Okay, any further question or comment from the board? In that case, we would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we close the public portion of the application for dimensional variance for property located at 64 Mark Tree Road.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Then here, none, we will.
Oh, I have a question. If I have another question, can I just submit it? Or like, I spoke to Karen earlier, can I just send her a question if I have? Or no?
No, it would be best if you do that, because the public hearing itself will be closed, so if you submit it. I don't sure that.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
If you have something, please.
Yeah, we, we can recall the motion and keep the floor open if you want to.
Yeah, we, right, we don't want to cut you off in any way.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, if I have a future question, that's what.
Oh, yeah, no, you're welcome to submit it. I'm just saying, if it, if it's gonna bearing on the decision, I get it.
Okay.
You know, but yeah, no, you, you can certainly submit a question, and we will answer. I'm not trying to say we're not get there, but procedurally, once the hearings closed, we can't take more evidence or anything like that, so.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay. So if you have something, you're, you're welcome, but otherwise, we'll move to close this. So if they move seconded, then we'll move to a roll call vote, all in favor of closing the application for a variance, let's say, I, John, I, Jay?
I.
Liz?
I.
Okay, so what we will do is deliberate and reach a decision on this, hopefully later this evening after we finish the public hearings. When we do, it'll be written up and submitted to the town clerk, at which point you will be notified. There will be at that point a 20-day statutory appeal period, so that either you or anyone else can appeal the decision we made. If no one does in that time, then the decision takes effect, presuming it's positive, you go and file it with the bank. If it's negative, then you can't. So I appreciate your bringing this and explaining what you did, and thank you, Mr. Arujio, for your perspective on it, and we always like to hear from those that are impacted. So thank you. All right. Our next order of business is the application for a grant of a dimensional variance at sorry, I'm looking at this sideways, 43 Bogastow Brook Road, I believe. It's somebody who's, would like to. Somebody who, who's would like to present this?
Myself, Jeff McLendon.
Hi, Mr. McLendon, how are you?
Good, Mr. Love, how are you doing?
Good, thank you. Please do, excuse me, why don't you turn the light on some?
The sun is going down.
We are.
Come out my cave.
Now we can see you. Mrs. Chris is with us as well, the property owner. So what we're proposing, as you've probably have seen on the documentation, is to do an addition on the left side of the home. They both, Mrs. Chris and Mr. Chris work from home and that's probably going to be indefinitely right now. And they're both sharing a room as an office on the second floor, which is very challenging. And the property is not conducive to do anything other than the left side of, you know, to construct on the left side. The right side has a two car garage under, so you could add on that side. And also there is wetlands further out on that right side of the property. So the left side, and there's already a sunroom off the back of the house. So the left side is the ideal situation and the dimensional variance that we're looking for, I think the requirement is 30 feet. And we're going to end up, we had sent a revised, there's going to be 24 feet to the stairs of the addition. And the addition is actually mainly an office, home office, but then there's a small powder room and mudroom.
Okay, thank you. We did get that. And I, I, let me, if I may step back to, we received some correspondence from the butter.
Yes.
Not be here and I, I'll read that into the record if I can put my hands on it. Yeah. Maybe I won't.
I have it. Do you want me to read it?
Would you, would you please? Yes.
Is it just the whole email from Ally Lima? Is that the one?
I think that's the one, yes.
Well, she, well, here. Oh, do I want me to write what she wrote on the grant or the email? Well, I'll just read that her email, which I guess can be in the record is attach your comments on the variance request for the record. As we discussed, our family is really the only one in the neighborhood impacted by this as by this, as this is encroaching toward our lot and we are fine with it. And then she notes, I did add comments relative to the 26 feet, not including the stairs. And then on the application, she wrote, our family will be on vacation during the proposed hearing. So we were offering this for the board's records that we take no objection to what is being proposed. And then she notes that there's an inconsistency in the variance request because it doesn't take into consideration the stairs. If, if the board will only accept the 26 feet as noted in this request, we're okay with that as well as it appears. The homeowner could modify the stairs to meet the 26 feet as proposed. Yes, that's what, that, those are the comments.
Okay, thank you. So we have that in. And as I understand, the, the request is to build as, submit it, which would actually need relief to 24 feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, a quick question. We did see the drawings and appears to be, but just to confirm, because then go through all the detail of the things, but your architecturally, it's consistent with the rest of the house and from a finished perspective, you're going to be consistent with the existing home?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that's always a concern.
That's my concern too. We don't want to do an addition that doesn't look like it belongs there, so.
Right. Usually that's not a hard one to convince people of.
Although you see it too often though.
Nonetheless, we, we like to ask. Are there questions by the board members about this application?
No, but I realized I, I kind of misspoke when I read her comments because I skipped over some stuff. It looks like she's okay with allowing 22, 23 foot or the 26 foot. She's okay with either one, yeah.
Gotcha.
I didn't really have any comments.
Okay. Yeah, I just did to confirm so that we have it, the real hardship that to doing this is the existence and the configuration of the existing structure, but we don't allow expansion in, in the whatever that would be towards. So the, anyway, to the left side as the drawing shown and nor to the rear because of the leach field, that, that's all right, that is unique to what, the way this house was built on this lot.
Right.
Okay. All right, if there are no, I'm sorry, are there anybody in the audience that has questions of the applicant? There anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard either in support or in opposition to the application? Seeing none and hearing none will give the board one last chance. And if you've got nothing more, we'll entertain a motion to close it.
There, I make a motion that we close the public portion of the application for a dimensional variance for the property located at 43 Bogastow Road in Holliston.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of closing the hearing signify by saying aye. John, I, Jay.
I.
Liz.
I.
Okay, thank you. We will, as we said, last one, we'll, we'll deliberate our decision on this again, hopefully that's tonight. We will then write it up and send it to the town clerk, at which time you'll be notified. And that will start the 20 day appeal period and clock running under that.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.
Okay, thanks. Okay, guys, we have Jay, I don't think you were on yet, but we, you know, our 16 Pearl Street decision. Yeah. Court, when we were on with, there, the town council had offered to have us go into executive session, bring us up to speed on what's going on with that litigation and whatnot. So we're going to plan to do that at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll do that early and then we'll schedule any of the hearings for whatever, eight o'clock, 7:30, or we need, whatever he thinks he needs.
No problem.
Okay, be interesting. And then I guess we've got now another action on our latest decision. Okay, all right, so you guys have time to go through these tonight?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mark Tree, what are your concerns and thoughts?
I don't really have any concerns or thoughts then. Other than maybe we consider a condition that the, they said that the, you know, more, a more detailed survey, at least be prepared relative to the lot line. And then I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, something more architectural as a condition to maybe the, the building permit, just because I don't know, other than the box, what's there. And I know that aesthetics aren't something we, you know, spend a lot of time on, but it would kind of be nice to know that, what, what it's going to look like.
Yeah, and I think given the concern on the drainage and then the wetness of land that did show how it would drain and collect so that.
Sorry, I'm having trouble connecting to the internet.
Alexa decided she'd join our meeting. Yeah, so, okay, that, I think that's reasonable.
Just for clarification, are you looking for a sideline stakeout in addition to what the typical as-built that's required, Jay?
Yeah, because the ad built isn't going to be, all they do is they take the, it's not, typically that's like a plot plan. It's not going to be an instrument survey. They probably will only look at records. They won't dig into the title. I don't think we need like a true alta type of survey at that level, but something a little bit more than, I guess, an instrument survey of some sort.
Okay.
And that identifies the offset to the line so that I, I think given when you're that close, it's probably a real good idea anyway.
Yeah.
You know, just to not get in trouble and find out, you've got to. We had one down near my house when I was first on here, right before I got on the board, they ended up building and missing down by the lake and ended up taking it down and then putting it back up again. It was not pretty. Okay.
You want plan approval?
I think so.
I mean, do we, so I don't know if we want a plan approval or I don't know, like, you know, how we just did it administratively for the other matter?
That's, that's, we could use the same line.
Like that.
Okay.
I mean, when you have plans of, of it just to run by us at the next meeting and we'll do what we did at the beginning of this meeting.
Okay.
Sure that they're.
I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know how to evaluate drainage, you know, I mean. I can do that. I'll pull the performance standards out of the stormwater.
Yeah.
By law. We have an infiltration requirement for downspouts.
Okay, yeah, I think.
That would happen anyway, right? I mean, despite, I mean, oh, wouldn't. Not necessarily. He's not going to trip the thresholds under the stormwater by law. He would need to disturb 10,000 square feet of area. But I, I would apply the same performance standard.
Apply the same criteria and
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think given that this is within 10 feet of a neighbor's yard, that's reasonable in what's described as a wet area. Reasonable.
Yeah, and I, I think giving, given the street and its history of drainage issues, I, I think that things need to be handled onsite as much as possible and not dumped out into the street either.
Okay. So there and everybody's okay with the 10 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I would have to disagree with Mr. Ria that if you build an 18 foot garage, you will never get two cars in it. So a 22 is, is modest enough. I measure mine because I always thought if I did it again, I'd make it about three feet wider, but that's enough a car that's just for junk. Anyway, any other thoughts and conditions? I guess the, that the architecture and finishes be consistent with the existing structure so that it looks like it belongs there and again, that's pretty, not, not a hard sell for most citizens. Anything else, folks?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
So, well, I do have a question. So if I look at the, if I look at the plan that was prepared for us, like I'm just trying to zone, zoom in here, it looks like it says 10.4 feet.
Yeah.
So are you suggesting that we just provide relief no closer than 10 feet?
I think so. That gives
Okay.
Five inches isn't really.
Okay.
Hold on, and yeah, let's be explicit on, no closer, so condition be no closer than 10 feet at its nearest point to the let's get this down.
Northerly.
Northerly side lot line, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
We're a little sensitive to that now.
Why? Is that the appeal? Is that the base of our appeal?
Yeah, they.
Yeah, too many details. Don't overshare.
Okay, I, I haven't read the complaint.
Okay.
And then should we also mention that, well, it's going to be as proposed here. So you know, we know that it's actually 17.3 in the back corner. Right? Yes. Because that's right, you don't want them encroaching into that triangle any further than what's shown on the plan. Yeah, that's right, yeah. Yep, understood.
Yeah, it doesn't start angling with the lot line, but yeah. And that, and we'll have the condition of plan be presented, approved by the board prior to issuance of building permit, yeah. Okay. Any other conditions?
I don't think so.
Like to make that motion then?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we grant the request or the, grant the, yeah, request for a dimensional variance for the property located at 64 Mark Tree Lane. And it's, how, how do you want me to do it? We just, we just went through everything as cited. Are you okay with that? As, as I didn't discuss with the conditions as discussed?
I think that will work.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, John, I, Jay.
I.
Liz.
I.
Motion carries three votes to none. Thank you very much. So to you, you, you've heard the discussion. You, you know what you can expect. We'll get that to you as soon as we get it written and, and done. And maybe you can talk to the, in the meantime, your surveyor and get him ready to fire it up. And again, after you get it, there's a 20 day appeal period. So nobody can do anything till then. Okay, thank you. Let's move to our next one on Bogastow Brook. Seems no real concerns there on my part. The only neighbor with any potential concerns, the one that said there, she's okay with it and we're still 26 feet and the hardship as described seems relatively unique and set with the personally okay with it.
It seems reasonable to me. The hardship is sharing an office with your spouse. You want to keep them married, so.
Yeah, I.
I'd like, I'd like to see you argue that one in court.
Karen, can you make sure that gets on the minutes?
Okay, the hardship, including but, but, including but, not limited to the, the shared office by your spouse.
It's clearly a financial hardship, Jay.
Yeah, right.
Clearly financial.
Right, divorce can be very costly. Okay, if we're good with it, what, and that, we, there's our findings. Findings are trying to share an office with your spouse indefinitely is, you're not going to work. What conditions?
I think all of the same where you've got, you know.
24, no closer than 24 feet to the.
This, this one's a little easier because we can say per the architecturals as, as provided, because they're very detailed.
Right, yeah, so we don't even have to further condition. I think we, we just should probably put the dimensional one as a specific condition, no closer than 24 feet to the.
26, right?
Well, 24 is what, because of the stairs.
Right.
Stairs, yeah.
That's right.
And that's why he submitted the updated one today that had the second dimension on there, same plan, just.
Right.
They didn't count that, so. They didn't count that, so no closer than 24 feet per the plan submitted. We don't need.
What, you're going to define? This is, was it north? Well.
I guess it's the.
It's the southwest lot line from.
No, it's, it's southeast, right?
North.
No, right, isn't it? Well, I guess.
North is towards the corner of the street.
It's north, it's the northeast lot line as depicted on the plan. But now flip.
But, but look at the, the up and the upper right of the plan is the.
Oh, I didn't see it, my bad.
Yeah, which, yeah, so north is northeast. So it would be the, let's call it the east lot line, the east side lot line, just so.
East side lot line per the plan and then facing the road, not from the road facing the house.
Yeah, well, that's what east is.
Right.
No matter which way you do it. It's on the starboard side of the house.
Yep.
So anything else? And then, of course, needs to be read put in, filed at the registry. But do we need anything else with it?
No, in that, I'm just curious because Willie talked about the, the relief area. So they're also adding a deck in the back, is that right?
Yeah, it looks like that.
I think they have a, I think they have a lift underway currently. And this is their phase two.
Got it. So I'm just looking, thinking of it as a, it's a nice sort of rebrand. Looks good.
Yeah. Maybe 200 feet of furniture. Compared to when we look at these little plans from Queens and Mudville stuff, this looks like a little tiny house, but it's not. It's just a different scale.
This is a house from the mid 80s.
It's a decent sized house and it's got, you know, even adding this, you're still 26 feet. They would kill for 26 feet to the lot line and half the town.
Yep.
So, all right, well. Excellent.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for the dimensional variance for the property located at 43 Bogastow Brook Road as we've described with the conditions we've described.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, move to vote. All those in favor, John, aye. Jay?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, so we'll grant that one. Jay, we, we missed you for the our appeal of the building inspectors thing. Because we realize you were the only one that actually was part of all of the decisions on that one up till then. But I don't know if you read the appeal, but it came down to, that's why we're laughing about sidelines. There was a reference to the southwest line, which was the incorrect refer, direction. And his argument was that that was actually referring to the rear lot line, not the, which directionally is correct, but everything else. You know, clearly you were talking about the side that was there. And that's where all of the relief was granted. So we upheld the building inspector's decision based on it, but it got a little testy. That was really nicely written, Karen. Did you, you did get a little help for it? I thought, maybe that's, yeah.
Wait, which, which application, what was the address on that one?
16 Pearl Street.
Oh, yeah, no, that's, yeah, I remember that one, yeah.
Yeah, we granted a
Yep.
Permit and then they build it six, because they didn't count the steps, which then infringed on the, the rear setback and we, yeah, anyway. And then they asked for a variance after the fact that we didn't grant it. And that's what they were appealing. So anyway, now they're filed on our appeal too. So we've got two actions on this one, I think.
I kind of assumed that would be the case.
Yeah, well, I think your advice probably would have been the, you just, when you told me to buy three feet from the guy behind you. But didn't happen. So anyway, we'll, we'll get a, we'll meet with.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to follow that through and I'm curious to see how it resolves.
Yeah, well. I told us they couldn't wait to get out of town. I think nobody was arguing with it. In any case, any other business that anyone spring up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I assume we're, we're going to continue with our remote.
I think that was everybody's preference, so.
No, I agree, I agreed with it. My guess is maybe all the towns are going to go back to it fairly soon anyway, so. Yeah. But I am fine with it. I think it, I think it works out really nice.
Yeah, I think it's in a lot of ways, I've missed seeing you guys in person, but, oh, yeah. Okay, I guess that's, that's probably it then. Well, yeah, we'll stay, if, if you get a different feeling or different ideas on that, just do it. But as of now, assume everybody feels they prefer this and.
I think it encourages participation, actually. You know, people can just log on from their homes and not have to trek out if they've got kids at home and camp. So I think it's actually great.
Then it's, it's easy to control and it forces people to wait their turn and that kind of thing, which makes the meeting.
Yeah, I've had, I've had to participate in some, not hotly contested, but you know, well-attended meetings, just on my professional side.
Yep.
And I love it because it's super orderly. You know, the information comes in and then you can answer it. Information comes in and you can answer it versus the kind of hysteria that comes.
Yes, right. Yeah.
Throw anything at you?
Well, they can, but it's, it's at risk of their own monitor.
So I, I, I'm all for it, if, as long as we can keep doing it. But Karen, you'll tell us if we can't for some reason.
Yeah, it looks like we're good till April. Chris feels about it, but he's he's got a lot of long days, I think. Anyway, if there's no more business, we're willing to listen to one more motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
I'll second it.
And second, we want to vote all those in favor, John, aye. Jay?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
All right, thanks very much, guys. Karen?
Recording stopped.
Chris and Christian, thank you so much and appreciate all your help with this, so.